Okay, I call to our special city council work meeting workshop of December 3rd. And I am going to recess us to reconvene one floor below us in city chambers.
So moved.
Second.
We all vote aye?
All voted?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, we're going.
Thanks, sir. It'd be easier and shorter if we kept it up here.
Kim, can't reach you? Do we have anybody that's asked to speak?
I'm the only one down. What's that?
At the workshop?
Oh. Signing your life.
It'll be up to you. It'll be up to him, won't it?
Signing letter to the nominees.
It's up to you if you want to let them speak.
Letter to the nominees.
Okay.
There's several here.
The nominee?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
But they also speak at the city council meeting.
On that board.
We don't take action.
Yeah, I'll open it up.
Board appointment.
After staff comments.
No, well, some didn't, some didn't.
So you said serious about your signing of the letter?
We're good.
Doing like a rubber stamp.
James not coming?
Did you read the letter?
Okay.
Did you actually write the letter? Or is this a secretarial letter?
Okay, I'm reconvening our special city council meeting workshop from one floor above. Down here, it was publicized as being on the third floor, so we actually had to officially start it up there. And then recess to come down here. It's more comfortable. So I'm reconvening our special city council workshop. Item number two is discussion of land and water conservation fund mineral wells improvement project. Staff, you want to start?
Some of these slides you have seen before, so I won't go into a lot of detail, but I have them there in case there's questions. Of course, the land and water conservation fund grant was approved. And the project period is from June 25th to May 30th, 2022. Just so everybody knows, city has a lot of different conflicting constraints that we have to navigate through on this project. Not only historic preservation input, but city council directives, input from general public. Of course, we have limited financial resources, American Disability Act, public bid law. So it gets a little complicated going through these projects to try to make sure we meet a whole myriad of rules and regulations. Again, this project went through the section 106 review. And it was approved by the SHPO, the Oklahoma Historic Society, or the state historic preservation office. We did have an arborist and we showed the feedback from the arborist on the trees at the last meeting. Comprehensive plan from 2002 and talking about mineral wells park in addition to other things, facility needs. And this is from page 106, talks about the need for defined parking and road improvements in the mineral wells park. And then back in July 3rd of 2018, when we had the workshop as part of the process to apply for the grant. At that time, the city council members at the workshop recommended adding additional parking areas and benches. This you saw before on, out of the historic preservation ordinance on not to limit new construction to any one period of architectural style. It's to be compatible and compatible is designed as capable of existing together in harmony. And then another excerpt out of introduction, even with our HPC ordinance or design guidelines. It's recognized that we still have to comply with federal and state laws and local ordinance like the American Disability Act. And on new construction, it says, new designs are not to create a false historic appearance. Infield constructions be contemporary yet compatible with historic character of neighboring buildings and the historic district in terms of size, scale, design, detail, material, color, and texture. If you look at the recommendations from the project engineer. My old eyes aren't as good as they used to be, but if you look at the splash pad, the budget was $250,000. And then $7,000 to put a fence around the splash pad to, so that children don't have a tendency to make a mad dash to the pond. The fence is not being any decision on it tonight, but the splash pad itself, the low bid, $324,543.80. That's more than we budgeted, but there's other areas that is less than what we originally budgeted. But there is a recommendation from the engineer to award that contract tonight. The sewer and water line extensions will be done with in-house labor, but the materials will cost us $30,000. Playground equipment, a budget of 315. Semeron Valley was the low bidder. And engineers recommending awarded that contract tonight, $264,741.27. Improved in asphalt parking, that bid was actually awarded a couple of meetings ago through the CIP process to Atlas paving an amount of $53,520. And then the ADA connecting sidewalks between all the different features. With the change order because to respond to some input we received and also to bring the cost more in line with our original budget. We will do change order number one to that immediately and reduce the number of concrete sidewalks connecting the various features. So that will be $76,407.35. Once we do the change order, the five pavilions, we are not awarding tonight. We think there's a better, more cost effective way to do those, but we budgeted $100,000 for five pavilions. We are reducing that to three pavilions. So there should be some savings when we do that portion of the project to help make up some of the difference. Miscellaneous items like curb stops, paint for park striping, benches, trash receptables, picnic tables, $36,000. A lot of those things we get through state inmate labor. But at the time we got this quote, there was a lot of things going on in state prisons and they were not in production at that time. They are back in production, so we think we can shave quite a bit off of that. And then engineering, we have made several changes on this project. So engineering is now estimated at $74,000. And then anytime you use land and water conservation funds, there's a sign required to show where the funding came from for the project. And there's a $1,000 budget for that. So with the things that we got set aside, we're not making the decisions. And the ones we are making decisions right now, we're at $967,000 or $92,000 over our original budget. But if we shave $20,000 for each of the shelters we take off, that would be 40. And if we can shave another $10,000, we should be within about $50,000 of our original budget. This is the original concept plan. And there was five shelters. Splash pad was going in here. And there was two shelters down by the splash pad. And then there was three shelters around the playground equipment. We got input that indicated that that might overwhelm the existing pavilion. So we have reduced the number of shelters and we have pushed some of them more towards the back of the park. And I will show that slide in a minute. This is just to show historically, there have been shelters close to the major pavilion, just for a point of reference. With the new latest layout, in red is what's consistent with the concept drawing from the start. The splash pad is in the location originally proposed. And the low bidder bid, the equipment that we presented to everybody at the start of the project. This is one of the picnic shelters and it was, it's at the location originally proposed. This is a new parking area to serve adjacent to the splash pad. We had proposed another small picnic pavilion there. We have deleted that one. This parking was in the original proposal and this gravel parking lot. And a lot of this is already gravel parking. There have been, even though the contract has been awarded for this, there has been some input from HPC that they would like to see this not as concentrated, but maybe provide some more green space and spread these parking spaces out and move some of them over by the wastewater treatment plant, which would be, instead of all of these here, we would move some of them here. And we think we can work with the contractor we awarded the bid to to accommodate that recommendation from HPC and others. This parking here was only going to accommodate compact cars, so we did eliminate that one. This shelter that was originally planned was eliminated. This one was relocated back towards the tennis and basketball courts. And then there's an existing shelter that's already there. We eliminated that parking. This parking was part of the original plan and of course, the playground is part of the original plan. And the low bidder bid what we had specked out for that originally. It's my understanding from feedback from the HPC meeting last night that they are in favor of the project with some concerns, but they expressed no concerns with the splash pad part of the project, which we're recommending awarding tonight. And this is the features that will be on the splash pad. This is the layout. Again, it's consistent with what our original concept plan was. Playground equipment, again, it's my understanding, the HPC has no issues with the playground equipment that has been selected to replace the outdated equipment we have. And that is what the bidder bid to install. And that's kind of the layout of it. Pavilions, this is not in color, but kind of gives the layout, they will be handicapped accessible. And this is more what it will look like. And we're trying to build pavilions that would be complementary of the existing pavilion in the park. And probably will come back when we get a chance and put a new coat of paint on the existing pavilion and use the same coloring that's used on the pavilion so that they are complementary of each other. With that, Tenny, our public works director is here to answer questions. Bill Myers, the engineer, is available. But again, my understanding primarily from the HPC meeting, the majority of the recommendations was to not have this parking as concentrated. Have more green area here. The three pavilions, they were okay with. The playground, they were okay with. The splash pad, they were okay with. And we think we can work with our contractor to move some of these and create some additional green space and move some of them over to this area. It'll be the same square footage or tonnage for the contractor, so it shouldn't be an issue. Open it up to address any questions that staff can address before you open it up to general public comments.
Questions from the council? Tenny, so we will be actually talking about what we had originally said was going to be kind of phase B for additional parking. That would be kind of west of the treatment, water treatment facility. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
That and blue.
That, that blue area up there?
We would do part of that now if we move some of the parking along the primary entry road. If we provide some green space there, we would move some of that into what was originally going to be phase B.
And I would assume that we're still going to have to have handicap parking close to the splash pad? Handicap parking close to the playground?
When we make it less concentrated, we will concentrate having the handicap parking adjacent to the features.
Okay, that'll be the priority. Okay, good. Is there any possibility of parking directly west of the basketball court, tennis courts? Between that and, I don't know what that other cement structure is up there. It looks like a garage.
So you're asking if like where the red portion that is just, I would say to my, to the east, moving that to the west?
Is that, is that red up there? Is that where the horseshoe pits are?
Yes.
Yes, but that portion had been eliminated.
It was only enough area and width to accommodate compact cars.
Compact cars? Okay, yeah, okay. So that's the one that's been, that's been eliminated? Okay.
It's in green there with the X's.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Other questions from council?
So on the horseshoe pits, why did we eliminate those?
We didn't eliminate the horseshoe pits.
I understand.
We eliminated the parking.
Because you would think if you're going to bring your gear and stuff, you would want to be close to that.
Staff looked at making, if we made it any deeper parking for regular vehicles, we were going to have to remove. There's a row of bushes right through there. We tried our best not to remove any trees, which no trees will be removed, no shrubs will be removed. The parking, we were only going to be able to get a depth that would be equivalent to compact cars. So with having the larger scale parking lot right there in front of the tennis courts, we felt that it was close enough to serve adequate parking for the horseshoe pits as well.
Do you have that one?
I might point out also the Shakespeare Garden area. We are slowly trying to restore that. And that is not going to be disturbed, that area is not going to be disturbed by this project. And we'd like to restore that area over time as well. And Tenny and his crews have slowly been working on that.
So the 20 spaces behind the tennis court is gone now, right? Is that what we're talking about? It's eliminated right here.
The L-shaped one?
Yeah, the L-shaped parking is.
No.
No, it's.
Still there?
Still there.
It's in red.
The one at the very top on the right is the one that you're eliminating?
Right, the little one up there.
Seventeen spaces?
Okay, I see.
And then the other green from one of the gazebos, the straight line, that, that was the pathway then?
No, that's showing that that gazebo moved from the original location to back of the.
Back spot? Okay. All right.
And there is a handicapped accessible sidewalk to all of the features that meet ADA requirements.
And that sidewalk is six feet wide?
Six foot wide with a four inch depth.
And is that what is required for ADA?
Yes, it does meet requirements. The minimum width we could go would be 36 inches. But with having the sidewalk directly in front of the parking, you've got to have the additional width so that once a car comes in and parks, front wheels reaching the stop blocks. The front bumper is going to be taking up a portion of the sidewalk, which is only going to allow you close to 36 inches for a wheelchair.
Okay. All right. Good. So a number of changes from the original plan.
Well, I think they're minimal, but, but yes, there are changes.
Okay. Anybody else? Before we open it up? Okay, all right. Thanks, Tenny. I'll go ahead and open it up. I just want to remind you, if you want to come and speak, name, address, you've got five minutes. We start our formal city council meeting at seven, so we've got to move along fairly decently. But who wants to kick off? It's an open, we don't do this very often, open mic. Not for singing, Jeff, but for comments. Okay? Who wants to start it off? No? Thank you, you were the only one, I think. But, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, come on, Erin.
I promise the stacks of papers don't, aren't as bad as what they look like.
The stacks are mostly pictures, I promise, guys.
Okay, identify yourself.
I'm Erin Brown, 519 East Washington Avenue. I'm one of the HP commissioners and the curator and historian at the Oklahoma Territorial Museum. And these are just, the HP commissioners are used to me bringing them stacks and stacks of paper. These are just for your reference. The HP ordinance for City of Guthrie, I pulled off the internet yesterday from our website just to, because there was originally some questions about whether the park was a historic resource. It is included in our HP ordinance. Also, I included the first couple of pages from the original National Landmark Historic Places nomination form that clearly outlines that the original four townships and mineral wells park is a part of the historic district. That nomination form is 87 pages long, I only printed a handful. And then just again, for your reference, a handful of images for you, historic images from the territorial museum's collection of the park over the years. So I'm just going to pass these out for you guys.
That's a stack.
It is a stack. Again, I promise most of it is pictures. And again, they're just for your reference. So the HP meeting last night, thank you very much for allowing us to have that and have the opportunity to talk to Mr. Myers and Mr. Maker. I think all of the HP commissioners came away from that meeting a little bit more confident in the plans that are going to happen with this project. A few things to point out, a couple of people from, have received, commissioners have received questions from other people about why in fact, this park is historic. The access to water for the train and the depot and for the people to have drinking water. It's the reason why the depot is located where it is and is also the reason why the city formed around the depot. So the access to the water in mineral wells park is actually one of the anchor points for our town. It's also seen some of the biggest celebrations and festivities of any kind. And you guys have this in your packet that you've received tonight. So just some of the things that we want to clarify, we don't necessarily have any issues with the built and construction and constructed environment here. There is nothing in that park in the built environment that is a historical resource. It is the natural landscape of this area that is the historical resource. It is the park itself. And so again, from the original grant application, I quote, "One of the most notable features of mineral wells park is the thick canopy of large trees that provide shade for the activities here." That is one of our biggest concerns is to maintain the historical natural landscape of this park as to the extent as possible because the HP does want to see improvements happen to this park. Some of our concerns that Mr. Maker and Mr. Myers addressed with us. And one of the issues that was brought up by one of our commissioners in particular is the, the need for a landscape architect. And we want to make sure that all of our ducks in a row, we're making sure that we're doing everything by the book. And whether or not a landscape architect is required by some rule or guideline. And again, that's a conversation that I think is more appropriate for Commissioner Kerr to answer and the city attorney and Linda Ozan, who's from the SHPO office. She's here tonight to answer any of those specific questions regarding the need for that. But HP recommends that just at the final stages of this project, if possible, if it doesn't astronomically increase the budget, if we could get a landscape architect to give a seal of approval, I think it would increase confidence for the, for the community at large, for HP commissioners and for you as well as the city council members. Some of the other things, preserving of the old growth trees, the natural landscape again, is one of our main concerns. We want to, any discussions with the placement and the sidewalks, and again, Mr. Maker and Mr. Meyer addressed a lot of these issues. We want to make sure that there is no negative impact on these old growth trees in this area. So again, you have a clearer description of some of these concerns there. The number of parking spaces seem kind of excessive. So are there any numbers as to the annual visitation to the park, the park on its busiest day? How do we determine how many parking spaces go for what? Mr. Kasek mentioned last night for Guthrie zoning assembly area, it would require one space for every 50 square feet. Is that actually going to apply in this case? And again, that's probably something for zoning and planning to really get into the.
I'll give you one more minute.
Yes. We totally love the ADA inclusive activities for children, especially the sidewalks. But we are happy to see that a lot of the sidewalks have been removed from the central part of the park. Again, you have the list of the rest of our suggestions. We're pleased to see the number of gazebos reduced from five to three because it seems like at the first conceptual plan, there was a lot of crowding specifically in this central area of the park. And for future planning, we would like to see some of these more parking, more sidewalks, and more gazebos spread out into other areas of the park as well to increase the usage area and the accessibility for the park overall. So I think in general, that sums it up. Any questions? Am I under the time limit?
It used to be called Island Park?
It did, it did.
It used to be the Coswood River, too.
Well, yeah.
They...
I'm just surprised that, as a historic place, they allowed a name change.
Well, in the national trend with the restorative waters, the radiated waters, like the hot springs Arkansas and some of the hot springs in Colorado, there is this natural, the national trend. And especially since the Capitol left Guthrie to Oklahoma City, they were trying to find a branding or a marketing scheme to bring people into the town, which is why the Guthrie Park Board is what operated the municipal bathhouse for a number of years. Because that was their attempt to bring people into the tourism into the town. So they renamed it specifically for that purpose.
Okay.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Erin. Anybody else in the public wants to make comments on this? Joe? Name and address.
Joe Chapel, 519 North Park Street, Guthrie, Oklahoma.
You're on the clock.
This is a little unusual that we're doing this in the workshop. I don't know whether to wait to speak, but I'll speak now. We had our workshop last night, and, not a workshop, but our meeting. And we were, felt like it was a really good meeting. Felt like Tenny and Myers were very, very receptive. And anyway, and I'm going to keep my part short. Joe Coffin, who is from Guthrie, a landscape architect, he was supposed to be here last night, but he was sick. And so anyway, he called me at 3:30 today and said that he was here, a little early. And we went to the park, and I just want him, I think everything in this park is going to work out wonderfully. I think the thing that we were concerned about last night were those big trees, particularly where the long line of parking is there. They had removed that in the back. Joe has a real eye for this, I mean, this is what he does for a living. And I'll just let him talk to you for just five minutes.
Joe Coffin, 5:30 Northwest 27th Street, Oklahoma City. Thanks for the introduction. I know some of you, not all of you, I have a degree in landscape architecture from Oshu. I've done design work in Guthrie for years. I did the design for Honor Park, the Apothecary Garden across the street. I've worked with Tenny and Parks Department in blue, and you guys for years, and Kim and I are all friends. I am happy to consult and help Myers Engineering or anybody in any way pro bono on this. After looking at the park, I would agree, overall, I think the ideas are great. I'm really glad to see some improvements there. I would have no problems with almost all of them, but I would agree on the parking situation. If I could point at this, it'd probably be easier to explain in more detail, since we spent several hours there. I'm fine with some parking up at this end, from here to about here, close to the pavilion and the park and the playground area. But from here, pretty much to the corner of the sport courts, I wouldn't recommend it, because that's the largest trees on the property. And they, they're really not going to do well with all these changes. I don't quite understand why you're avoiding the spireas over here, because I can see regular parking there. I don't know that anybody cares about those 30-year-old shrubs, because they look kind of strange 25 feet from the road, anyway.
Where is that?
It's where you're going to put the compact parking before, and took it out somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
It's where you're going to put the compact parking before and took it out. So I would suggest putting parking back there and making it normal depth with the sidewalk or whatever you want to do, because there are no trees over there. And those Van Hooch spireas that are ancient look kind of stupid in the middle of grass, anyway. So, and I'm sure you won't miss mowing around them. Also, this area on the west side of the sport court, there's a couple of trees in there that you can work around. So there's definitely a lot of that, could be parking, which is fine. I wasn't particularly a fan of this at all, just because this spaghetti junction nightmare of a road thing where no one knows where to drive is already a mess. And so adding more paving to an area that already has too much paving that has no function seems stupid to me. But that's my thought. And to solve that problem, I think you could do parking around this road, on the east side of this road, on the south side of this road, because there are no trees. It's further from the pavilion and the splash pad. You could put the fencing on the inside of the park, on the inside of the parking, and have gateways to get through to keep the kids from the parking area. And I'd rather see more grass between the pavilion and less parking cars, so people can go from the pavilion to the splash pad and not get run over. So that's, and there could, there's a spot also on the west side of the pavilion for a few parking spots if you wanted to, right in here. But I'm not particularly a fan of that or this.
But your primary concern is the trees?
Correct.
Okay.
Eighty percent of the roots of those trees are in the top six inches. And they extend out roughly as far as the canopy. So if you dig a trench eight inches deep in the middle, right next to the trunk, half the tree will die. And oaks are one of the most sensitive trees on the planet.
So you have to stay to the outside of the canopy is where you have to stay?
As far away as possible.
Right.
Yeah, which right now, we're driving under those trees.
Right.
So I don't see any way of paving two-thirds more of space around them and them surviving or doing well. Probably eighty percent of them would die in, within eight to 10 years of doing that, in my opinion.
Well, they're gorgeous trees, I don't think any of us want to see them gone, so...
They are beautiful. The other thing I'd recommend is getting rid of a lot of the gravel in that area, because compaction and parking over it isn't helpful either. So if we could take the gravel out, keep people on the road, and put a wood fence along there to keep people from pulling off of the road, and getting gravel removed and putting soil back in, letting grass grow back into the trees, it would be a lot more beneficial to those oaks. They're going to live a lot longer and be a lot happier if they don't have tires driving over them and compacting the soil.
Now, people have been parking there for years.
They have.
But every time we go, we kind of like your deal. I like, you know, we park in front of the gazebo thing, type area. Of course, there hasn't been that many, there's never been a, it's never been full.
Right, well, there wasn't that much to do. And that's the other thing, the only other comment I'd say is, I have no problem with the smaller pavilions. This one doesn't make much sense where it's located to me, because I don't know who would want to eat between a chain link fence and a road. I mean, you've got a lot of space out here. So this is a bigger green space it could go, or really, my favorite selection would be over there on the west side.
See, that's what I'm hoping we can...
There's a spot on the...
Target.
South end of that dam, that's a pretty good sized green space. It's far enough away from the other pavilion, but it gives you a destination, something to look at. And there's just a big, it's just a big blank spot over there. So to me, having one over there and the old one, and not doing this one...
Well, if you go back, Leroy's proposing other parking over there, too, which would tie in that whole side, and we've already approved a road over there.
The other thing, if you've got sidewalks to use up, from that pavilion across that little damn way to the bathrooms would be a great idea, because right now, it looks like a mowing nightmare. Because you can't hardly get across there without a machete or, because the weeds are five feet tall. And they mowed it recently, it looks like, but that's not normal from what I understand.
And of course, our comprehensive plan called for, or suggested, a bridge from that side over to the main area.
Yeah, I mean, but that, the existing dam that's there, actually, it looks like it's, it's got a spillway underneath it, sort of thing. But I don't know why you couldn't put a sidewalk across the top of that. And then it makes your circulation a loop for someone that wants to walk or jog, and you don't feel like you're going to get attacked by some creature that crawls out of either side of the swamp.
Okay, Joe, thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Joe.
Especially your comment on pro bono.
We're hoping that we, we're hoping we can get Myers to follow that kind of thing.
You do, we catch that.
And since I didn't use my whole five minutes, I did want to say, just for those of you that didn't see the meeting last night, I got a little history lesson on those trees. And they're burr oaks, they're rare in Oklahoma. They only grow in the perfect spot. And that happens to be the perfect spot. They, floods don't bother them. Those trees are probably 100 years old, they lived to 300 or 400 years old. They could be 200 years old, I don't know that. But they, if you plant one in your front yard when you're, you know, 20, you're not going to have a big tree when you die, okay? They're very slow growing. And so that's why the, and I don't think, in our meeting last night, when we were talking about moving parking around, the places that he located them, I don't think we're going to lose any parking. You know, the numbers may be a little less than 90, but there's, there might still be a need for some across behind the water treatment. But I know this sounds like a, I had no idea that he was going to be here early, but I'm glad he did. And when he was, he was doing this, I said, "Well, would you do this pro bono?" And he said, "Yeah, I would, for Guthrie, I would," so...
I like the parking on the other side. Is this one caveat?
Sorry, the other thing he just reminded me of, that you probably don't know also about burr oaks, is they have the largest acorn of any oak tree. So the other thing that's a problem, if you're parking under it and they're 40 feet in the air and you drive a car that is not made out of really heavy metal, you're going to have dents a lot when they fall off the tree and land on your car or your person. So that's probably another good reason to get the parking on the other side of the park and not walk around or park your vehicle under it.
Or put up signs that watch for falling acorns. Other comments? Many of you had comments last night, and I think most of us, if not all of us, have seen those. But please feel free, this is your opportunity.
Is there any lighting plans for this? I haven't seen any lighting. I think, what's the, is there any plans for making the park more lit or more period-looking lit?
None in this project.
None at all? I thought I remembered lighting in there at one point.
No.
No.
Not in this project.
What lighting, what lighting do we have down there now, Leroy?
Tenny would be better to answer that.
Pole lights up by the road? Through the park?
Through the park.
Right.
Okay, all right, hearing no other comments, I'm adjourning our special city council meeting workshop and call to order our special Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting workshop.
We can't till seven.
No, there's the number six.
This is the workshop.
Oh, okay.
This is the workshop.
Okay.
We're still workshop.
Okay. Go ahead, go for it.
I stand corrected, Steve.
I didn't realize that, you're right.
Staff comments?
How advanced it is you want, or you can have the mouse.
Before we jump off into the schematic of our wastewater treatment plan, I thought I'd kind of walk you through the task order itself. And this task order 96 with Myers Engineering's kind of been kicked around several times. It originated back April 29th of 2014. It was signed by the city manager at that time, allowing Myers to produce us a plan and handle all the bidding process. The project went out for bid at that time, and the actual bid came back in at roughly $138,000. And what that was, was to just clean out the three holding ponds at our wastewater treatment facility. I'm not real certain on why, but the bid was rejected. From what I could find, this was way before my time as far as public works director, but what I could kind of find was, I believe it related back to funding. Again, the bid came in at 100, just right at $140,000, and they only had like $80,000 budgeted at the time. Shortly after that, an amendment one came in place, and it was signed in May, on May 5th of 2015, which increased the contract $10,000 and $150. It then included not only cleaning out the three ponds, but a sludge drying system was added, which I refer to as a sludge box and probably will later on. The plans was, has been designed by Myers. It was to cover the bidding process, which it never did take place, it's never taken place. And since that time, we had, we've changed management. And roughly in 2016, it looked like maybe the new wastewater treatment facility started to talk for the new plant came up, came up. I'm kind of thinking that that's why this project was then put on kind of the back burner. So that's kind of where we're at now. So we've kind of, I guess you could say, kicked the can around several times. It's been roughly five, six years to get us to where we're at now. I think at this time, it maybe would, to help you relate to what we're asking to do, if I kind of walked you through the flow schematics of our plant. I may have Lee help me out if I stumble here a little bit. But, so our sewage comes in, and it goes to the headworks. And from the headworks, it takes its way up to what we call the grit chamber. And from there, it goes over to the two clarifiers. And once it reaches them two clarifiers, it sits there roughly 60 to 90 days. And it then forms two separate, it forms a liquid and a solid, more or less. The liquid is then goes on to one side of the plant, down to the trickling filter side. And then the sludge, which is the solid form, takes its way back up to where the two digesters are, that's in blue. And then once that sludge, that's kind of where our problem starts with our existing plant. The sludge has to set in them digesters, again, 60 to 90 days, to digest. And from there, it turns into, again, two forms of, you have a supernet liquid that can be brought back to your plant, and then a sludge product that is sent out to the drying beds. What we've ran into is the only means of treating the sludge from the digesters is through drying beds. It feeds from the dry digesters, gravity flow out to the beds. And depending on the weather conditions, summertime, we can dry sludge almost weekly. You've got the heat, it dries it up, we're able to get it out of the beds and get it out of there almost weekly. But in your winter months, your rainy season, there's times that it takes up to 90 days for the drying process through the drying beds. Which, if Erin would go ahead and go to the next slide, this is what staff comes to, it was kind of ironic, but Monday morning, matter of fact, when they showed up, that's, you're seeing the top of one of our digesters. That's all sewage on top of the digester lid. If you can go forward two more slides, that's what the actual lid should look like. So with saying that, if he goes back to the schematic, where we've ran into trouble with the timeframe that it takes us to dry the sludge, our digesters are full, and we're having to send that sludge out to our holding ponds, which the holding ponds are only, their only purpose is for emergency purposes only. Your heavy rain seasons, infiltration, we have to send that out to them ponds. Well, for years, as you can see, this task order has been talked about, and we haven't done nothing with it yet, that middle pond is full of sludge. We can no longer return that product back into our plant due to it being full. We've roughly got, I believe, Myers recently looked at it, there's roughly, I believe, four to six foot in the middle cell, that would have to be removed and then land applied. The supernet product that we were talking about, which should be able to be returned back to our plant, with both digesters being so full, it's at such a strong product that we cannot bring it back into our plant without violating a treatment process. So we're having to send it out to the ponds as well. And with this process going on, we constantly have flow coming in, too. So we're not gaining anything... So we're not gaining anything currently on our flow. So I hope that kind of helps explain what we're asking to do with task order 96 with the amendment two, which I'll explain. And during, and Bill, maybe you can help me out here if I need it. Task order, amendment two will, during the phase of amendment one to the task order, there was some electrical issues that came about, that they were going to have to relocate some current electrical that came into the plant, am I correct? So we're having to look at amending the contract for that. And back in the original task order, the very first one, that task order was going to be cleaning out the ponds, and we were going to take it out to a farm north of town. Well, staff has kind of reevaluated things and thought, we might as well go ahead and permit our current property where we're planning on building the new plant, which is going to have to be permitted anyway, and land apply this product out there, versus permitting a piece of property that is going to serve a one-time purpose. And then as well, you'll have to get the permit for the actual construction, is what the task order amendment two will cover. And I will say, every bit of what we've looked at here on this task order is something that will have to be done, or will be done during the new plant procedure. The sludge box that I referred to, which will provide us a second means of disposing of sludge, and that, we can almost dispose of sludge on about a three-day turnaround. You're running 30 yards of sludge out of your plant in about every three days. It'll dry the sludge, it puts it in a 30-yard dumpster, and either we can dump it, we can land apply it as we currently do, or we can contact waste connections if we don't have staff, and they can come pick up the 30-yard dumpster and haul it off, and take it to a licensed landfill. Again, every bit of this in this task order will have to be done. The cleaning out the ponds will have to be done when the new plant comes about. The new sludge box that we're looking at will be done at the new plant at that time, or we can go ahead and take action now to provide staff a second means of sludge reduction, and then move this box to the new plant at that time. So really, what we're looking at is if we approve task order 96 amendment two, we're currently filling out the application for DEQ for approval to, for the, to extend our permit for our current plant, which expires. Hopefully, that shows to DEQ that we're kind of taking some steps to get ahead of the game with what they've cited us for in the past. So I'll open it up for questions if
Questions from council.
So the, just so I'm clear, you're, it's, how much is it to clean out the ponds and the, and the concentrators and all that stuff? It's all backed up right now? Because is that what this $10,000 is going to go towards as well? The engineering on that, to how to figure out how to clean them out?
The Myers put together us an estimate, and for the clean out of the ponds, as well as the
Which has to be done anyway.
Has to be done anyway. The construction of the new sludge box
Which has to be done anyway.
Will have to be done anyway. The permits, two permit fees, the engineering fee, which a lot of it has been done, the plans have already been done in the original amendment, in amendment one, and in the original task order 96.
Total of engineering in all the work is $335,000.
I'm not talking about the engineering. I'm talking about what's it cost to clean out the ponds and the dehydrators?
The estimate
That are overflowing.
The estimated amount, the total amount is $335,000.
To clean those out?
To clean out the ponds, the digesters, and construct the sludge box, yes.
Plus permit.
Plus permit.
But those are things that we were going to have to do anyway. We're just moving, we're just moving the process ahead.
I thought I heard $138,000 from a past council before you came on. Was that just cleaning out the ponds, or the dehydrators, or something?
The $138,000 was back in 2015, and it was only to clean out the ponds.
And we only had $80,000 in the budget.
And we only had $80,000 at that time in the budget.
What's our budget for this now?
We will fund this, we've been setting aside money in a fund designated for the wastewater treatment plant. We have the money in that fund to pay for this. And what we're hoping is, the closer we can get to retiring the debt on the water plant, the better financially we will be to take on the burden of the debt for the new wastewater treatment plant.
But
By doing this, we're hoping that we can get our existing permit on the current plant renewed, to give us a little more time. And I think it's five years left on the water plant. The closer we can get to that, the easier it's going to be for us to absorb that financial debt to build the new wastewater treatment plant.
And everything we're doing now is going to be used in
It's just preliminary.
Something will have to be done.
Well, but what we talked about a couple of years ago was that we were at max capacity on everything, and that's what I'm seeing right here, is if it's overflowing over the lid, I mean, you can't go much beyond that.
Yeah, and what caused, what really created that and caused that issue that you've seen in those photos was, the digesters, again, should have two forms of product in them. You should have your more solid substance sludge, which will come out of the bottoms, and then you've got your supernet liquid that is a more liquid form. Well, our digesters are so much, so full of your solids, that they're plugging up our drains that's allowing the supernet to get out. And that's, then, them lids just float on top of the two digesters.
But theoretically, you buy a lot of time by cleaning these out, do you not?
Yes.
Like years?
No.
No?
No.
I'm talking the digesters, the ponds, all of it.
Your digester's going to fill back up fairly quick.
Yeah.
Because we produce so much sludge that we just can't get rid of it fast enough. The drying bed, that's old school technology. It's old.
Yeah.
So it's slow.
So hence a new wastewater treatment plant.
So how's this going to make it better?
Digestors.
The drying boxes, I can get rid of sludge twice a week instead of every three weeks. You know, in the winter time, it's months. I poured Tuesday, I poured last Tuesday, it won't be dry out January.
Are you talking about, are you referring to like, de-watering boxes? Is that what that?
Yeah, de-watering box.
Okay, so we have that, you don't have that now.
Can't get rid of it until it's dry.
It's sludge twice a week.
Okay. So what I'm saying, so if we do this, then you prolong this whole, maybe the whole nut of the 12, 14 million we got to spend on a plant by years. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, you prolong it.
So we buy time
You buy time.
In order to fund it.
Yeah, which is, what we're trying to do is buy time. And as of right now, we're slowly choking.
And it was something we were going to have to do anyway.
We're going to do it anyway.
And we showed DEQ that we're ahead of the game.
Yes.
And I'd like to point out
I like the whole plan.
I'd like to point out, Tenny keeps referring to this as product.
Well, it's a product of something.
Totally, yeah. Okay, any other questions from council, of staff?
What are we asking for? $10,900 to write to Myers for
The engineering part, and then we will come back with bids for the balance of the 335 to actually do the work.
Yeah, yeah.
At a later date.
Okay.
Can't do motions or anything here, anyway.
Nope, not in workshop.
No, but I'm
Not in workshop.
Well, we got action items if they want to.
Is that it?
Oh.
That's all I had.
Good job, Tenny.
Thanks, Tenny.
Okay. Well, can we do that action item then?
We can.
Okay, we can do that?
First off, the special meeting.
All right. Okay, I've been told that we can do an action item then in our special meeting. So I'll entertain a motion then to approve amendment
Action item.
Order two.
I'll beat you to it.
Task order 96, Myers Engineering, for $10,900. Well, we have a motion. Is there a second?
But how do you do that when it's on the regular? I'm just asking, got a curiosity. When it's on the regular agendas.
What we did, as a workshop, is the special meeting, and if you have an action, whatever's on the agenda
I'm going to make a motion to approve
It's already been a motion.
Second.
And the reason we put it on the regular meeting as well is, we didn't know if we might run out of time before 7:00.
Okay.
So we have a motion, any second, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote term.
See the votes. Mr. Case, you
Yes and no?
You dual personality?
No, I didn't hit no. I hit yes. Yes is my vote.
Yes, okay. Unanimous approval from all those present then to move forward with amendment number two to task order number 96. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned on our